Flap twice and the microphone comes on, whoops. All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular study session meeting of Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty four. The time right now is seven P M. I'm gonna go ahead and ask that our clerk Wykoff, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Foulter, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Fisher, and Scarborough.
All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and Councilmember Scarborough, will you please lead us on the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item that we have on the agenda is public comment. This is a limited public forum for people to speak to the city council during this council meeting. Topics are topics are limited to items on tonight's council meeting agenda and to topics specific to city laws, budget, and operations under the council's authority. Comments that are outside this limited scope will not be allowed. Comments that do not follow the council's rules of procedure will not be allowed. Person to council rules procedure as amended by council action on December twelfth, twenty twenty three. Oral public comment is limited to in-person comment only for all, uh, only for all city public meetings, including city council and city boards and commissions until further notice. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Spoken comments that are not within the scope or time limit of the limited public forum can be sent in writing. Information on where to send written comments is on tonight's agenda and on the screen. We will now begin public comment. Please take, uh, please state your name and area of residence or association with the city and topic, and then we will start the timer. Um, is there anybody who's interested in speaking this evening? Okay, um, I don't see, uh, is there, okay, not seeing anybody interested in speaking this evening. I'm gonna go ahead and say that we are now done with public comment and and move on to the first item on the agenda, and that would be item, uh, five announcements and presentations, five point one, police station site and space needs study, facility assessment report, and Monroe Police Department Program Presentations with Chief Jolly. Chief Jolly.
Thank you, Mayor Council. It's a privilege to be here tonight. I believe online we have our representative from McKenzie. I also have with me, uh, Commander Paul Riot, who is already the general project manager for this project. We're here tonight to talk about the police station site and space needs study. Uh, we've talked with the council previously about this and with the Public Safety Committee twice, uh, to give updates. We are now in a process, uh, thanks to the council and the mayor of being able to take an evaluation of our police facility. As you're aware, uh, we're about halfway through this project now, and thank you for, uh, supporting us and getting this going. Uh, the goal here is to keep up with the growth that has happened in Monroe over the years, the infrastructure, the population, and so forth. Uh, our police department has grown and we've outgrown our current facility. In two thousand eight, the mayor and city council developed long-range plans to accommodate this growth, and one such plan was the municipal campus improvements master plan. There are three phases to this plan. Phase one was the public works and operations building, which has been completed, and that's turned out well. Currently, we're in phase two, in which if you have any questions, uh, Jordan Otto is here in the audience to give you any updates about the city hall municipal campus plan. And fast forward sixteen years from the initial study in two thousand eight, the police department is just in the primary stages of engaging with McKenzie, who was selected as our architect to look at our facility. And we're looking at both space and site needs, and we're about halfway through the project, wouldn't you say, Paul? And tonight, we're going to have McKenzie do a presentation about that. Uh, the project involves four tasks related to updating police facilities in Monroe, including the police station, evidence control unit, evidence impound, force mitigation and wellness room, capital equipment, storage space, and secure employee parking. Currently, our facility is under ten thousand square feet, and we rob and take and use any other items and garages and shelters that we can to facilitate, um, carrying out our mission and uh, keeping operations going. Uh, but the ten thousand square feet was brought about by a facility that was built in nineteen ninety one. So that's where we're working at now. Uh, there are four tasks that McKenzie was tasked with doing. Um, in task one, the design team has already assessed the police building's condition. They've evaluated the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and ADA aspects, and I believe Kim may be able to talk about that and some of those, uh, concerns or findings tonight. Also, as a side note, uh, we have engaged with Homeland Security to do a physical space assessment, uh, to mitigate threats and assess the vulnerabilities in our building. And, uh, we can share those possibly at another time separate from this. Task two was to take the staffing data and look at a building that would be sustainable and valuable to our community twenty and thirty years out. Not just remodeling the existing facility, but actually meeting the needs of the community well into the future, which is what McKenzie undertook. Uh, this needs analysis identified ideal square footage for a police station at around twenty-eight thousand square feet, a significant increase from where we are at now. I believe we're in the middle of task three, which is identifying up to three concepts, site and floor plans. One thing we've identified with our current footprint is that because of what space we are allotted for the facility, that would necessitate most likely a two-story facility, um, which which, uh, Kim can address what that would relate to in dollars and uh, adjacency placement. And then finally, task four involves identifying potential sites within the city limits for relocating the police department. Should the council and mayor feel that it's necessary to move the police facility off its current footprint, and that has not taken place or that is down the road. The fiscal in impacts, I will let him go into that in detail, and we hope to work with the mayor and the council to find ways to finance and make that acceptable for our community and our taxpayers and while being good stewards of the city's finances, as well as taking care of the needs that will be identified by this study. Um, we have began strategizing with our financial guru, our in-house director Hasser to find ways and methods to bring to the council and the mayors as we go through this project, some solutions to financing. Um, the time constraints, the site and space needs assessment for the police station is scheduled to conclude in June of twenty twenty four, just before the citywide budget discussions for the next two-year budget cycle. This timing is very important, so we hope to make sure that we come back and present to you the final plan and concept that McKenzie has. I believe in April, we will have a concept plan presentation for you, and then the final report in June of twenty twenty four, um, that brings everything together for your final review. So in a second, I'm gonna turn the time over to Kim Doyle. She's a senior associate, associate with McKenzie and, uh, the project manager for our project as we are now. We're going to take a very high-level view in general terms. We've not gotten into the weeds, selected colors, found out where Paul's office is or where the patrol bay is. This is very high-level in general at this time, and Kim can put that together. Uh, we'll update where we are, talk about the deficiencies, and again, we can talk in another forum about the homeland security physical assessment. And we'll kick around some adjacencies. We have been kicking around some adjacencies, and this was only as a result of a group of us going down on a tour where we saw some McKenzie facilities and some of the latest additions and necessities that police facilities are incorporating now into their designs. That was very beneficial for us, and, uh, I can give nothing but several gold stars to McKenzie for the projects that they've put together from Salem to, uh, I was gonna say Westman, but we'll go with Canby. So there's some, some, uh, great facilities out there. And we can talk about some obstacles that we encountered, uh, with our existing footprint. So we'll have the programming coming up, I believe, next. And again, I talked to the Public Safety Committee and the mayor for a local tour of police facilities, which we are still in the process of arranging, and we will get to that. And then at the end, Kim and Paul, as well as Jordan, will be available for questions if you have any. And so without further, I will turn it over to Kim Doyle. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Chief. Just making sure everybody can hear me before I get started. Perfect. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as, as Chief Jolly mentioned, I'm Kim Doyle with McKenzie, a senior associate um, with the firm and the project manager for this project. Um, I've been with McKenzie for about nine years, um, primarily focusing my attention on law enforcement and emergency response facilities, uh, but been in the industry for about twenty-four years. Um, as Chief mentioned tonight, we're gonna kind of focus on task one and two that we were tasked and contracted to do for this project, and that's taking a look at the existing facility assessment and the programming summary and space needs that we've, we've found. Um, we can go to the next slide. So part of the existing facility assessment, this is where we're looking at the deficiencies within the facility, um, what's up to code, what's not, so that might be the ADA accessibility issues. Uh, we also had, we had a team, so it wasn't just architecture that came out, um, to review the facility. We also had our structural engineers come out. We had our civil engineers come out to look at the site, um, and the parking and, and the accessibility and ramps, um, there as well. We also had our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers come out, um, to look at your existing systems, both from a HVAC standpoint, and then also from your electrical and lighting standpoint as well. Um, so some of the high-level, um, we, we did a full report for this and some of the high-level pieces that came out of this um, report and assessment is, um, kind of the insufficient space, um, for your on-duty patrol vehicles and the cross-traffic that you see between your public works, um, traffic and vehicles along with your patrol. So there's a lot of shared entrances and cross-traffic, um, that's coming through from there. Um, the current facility has quite a few areas where it's not compliance with accessibility to the current code. Um, there's also quite a bit of, um, insufficient storage space throughout the facility where um, spaces are being, items and spaces are being stored where they can be. Um, the evidence building, which is on one of the outbuildings within the facility, um, it's not temperature-controlled environment for, um, an onsite staff person. Um, there's failing insulation and a lot of air and water infiltration coming through the walls from there. Um, back in the main building, there's a lot of video and audio privacy issues coming through throughout the facility, through the interview rooms or the, the conference room. So this is like your acoustics, um, and wall sound transfers through the walls. The soft interview room, so these are the rooms that you would typically see on a public side of a law enforcement facility. Um, they're located within the secure side, so on the officer side. Um, so juveniles and victims are needing to be walked through the secure area versus having it directly off of, of the lobby. Another adjacency, the armory and the weapons cleaning, they're not located adjacent to each other. They're, they're far apart from each other throughout the facility. Um, and one of the, is, is Paul, our chief, mentioned a lot of security vulnerabilities, um, throughout the facility that are presenting risk and to staff and visitors. Um, seismically, uh, the building seismic, it's, it's sound, uh, but it doesn't meet the category four for an essential facility. Um, nor would it pass the ACS, ACE, A S C E forty-one seismic evaluation. So there's a few different areas that we can talk to, talk about on there where it's not meeting, some of your walls, your sheer walls are not as thick as they need to be to meet that seismic evaluation. Um, and then the kind of the out, outskirts buildings, the evidence building of the training facilities don't have a fire protection system, um, which would be required to for your evidence, um, storage. Next slide. So the next portion that we were tasked to look at, and this is starting to look at your new building and your growth. Um, so this is where we start to, uh, we call it often our recipe book, um, where we start to determine how many offices do you need, how many conference rooms, how many, what is the predicted, projected growth for the department, um, for the next. We don't look at just moving, um, we want to make sure we right-size this for the future. So we look at it at twenty-year growth, um, and we look in that projected, um, and we, we put this together. So we start, um, on day one, we send out a questionnaire after our kickoff meeting with the department and the stakeholders. Um, we send out a questionnaire, and this is sent out to each division within the police department, and this is a chance for them to write down, really a chance for us to dive in on how, how do they work? How does your department work? Um, sometimes every, every department's a little bit different, so it's our chance to dive in and and learn how this department works in each division. Um, and as we're putting this together, so we're some of our space program needs, um, we're also looking, you know, at understanding your growth, some crime statistics that changes your officer count. Um, we're also looking at national averages, and this is always that we validate the program at the end. Um, we can move on to the next slide. So this is kind of a rolled-up summary. This is not every page. So once we send out the questionnaires, we get that back. We start to kind of pre-populate the program. So we have a sheet for each division that you'll see here. Um, so administration, we start to look at the staffing counts that we worked with the department on, um, at existing, your move-in, um, which may be a few years out from now. Um, and then we look at a ten-year and a twenty-year growth. Um, we also then look at, you know, what is the total square footage for each division, um, which is populated by each office, um, each workstation, any shared support spaces, storage, copy areas, um, those would be under each division. And then also you'll see down there, there's a common area. So this is gonna be your break room. These are shared, um, amenities that every division is using. Um, so your break room, your restrooms, your lockers, um, storage, um, your Sally Port if there's one. Um, so these we're also looking at, what do you need, what do you have now? What do you need at move-in? And then what do you need at ten and twenty years? Um, and then there's kind of going, we can stay on this slide, but we validate these as we're going through. So we're looking at the staffing counts. Um, we populate for every project we work on, other projects that are in the area, we start to get our own database of what their officer counts are and what, what the square footage and their population of that city is. So we're starting to kind of backcheck and validate these numbers. The average that we are finding, um, currently is about five hundred square foot, um, per officer, and that's how we kind of validate and backcheck this number once we've gone through the program. Um, we also start to look at our site requirements. So you'll see that at the bottom, um, so we can right-size that, um, your site needs. So if it's not on the existing site, um, or if we need to determine how, if the existing site is too small, um, how much more space do we need? So you'll see that at the bottom, there's the public parking and then square footage, and then there's also the secure parking, um, and then you see our total site requirement. So that's rolled up. Um, your circulation, um, also any out storage buildings, um, your entry plaza. So we're trying to get a full picture of all of um, your site requirements and site needs to get a full picture of how much space do you need. Um, so those are the two current tasks that we, we've done so far. Um, as Chief mentioned, we have started the task of laying out this building and the adjacencies with each department or division um, with each other and then laying it out on the site in conjunction with the city hall, um, and how those will relate to each other in the, the two parking areas there. So that'll be what we present to you mid-April, along with looking at other potential sites in the city, um, as options as well, and we'll have site test bits for those as well. Any questions on, on either the existing facility assessment or the programming?
Chief? Did you have anything else to add?
No, I'm just available for any questions.
Perfect.
As is Kim.
Great, thank you. Um, councilmembers, do you have any questions or anything at this point in time? All right. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
Chief, can you speak to what kind of the victim's experience might be like when they have to come through a secure area? They have to give testimony on on something. I, I remember seeing something like that, uh, when I did a ride-along.
Right now, it's, yes, right now, it's problematic in that they would have to basically navigate the entire station. There's not a separate entrance, nor is there any privacy, and the facility doesn't, uh, the the atmosphere would not be conducive to having a good interview for victims of serious crimes nor children. We don't have that capacity to we don't have adequate interview groups for that group of clientele.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other, uh, questions from council? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So we'll see more about this in April, correct, Chief? Aprils, perfect. Kim, thank you, Kim Doyle. Thank you very much for the presentation this evening. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
All right. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item will be councilmember reports. We'll go ahead and start on the end with councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, welcome back. Happy New Year and, uh, uh, nothing to report, uh, for city, I believe, this week.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Fisher.
I don't really have much. Um, I just hear that we want to name our snowplows. So, yeah, I came up with a couple of names, um, to share with everyone. Storm and Norman. Uh, snow is not, um, we be plowing, snowmageddon, David Snowy, David Bowie, and driving with Snowy. So that's all.
Did you put those on the Facebook page?
Um, I haven't yet.
You should put them on the Facebook page, but they can't, they can't indicate if they like, cause then, you know, quorum, but yeah.
Yeah, I know. I just decided I wouldn't put it on Facebook, cause it seems to muddy everything up. I can say whatever I want, so, um, and that's all, that's all I've got.
Okay, well, they're noted for the record then.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Walker. Snowplow names?
I can't follow.
You got it.
I can't follow that, um, but I'm for Stormin'.
Norman?
Norman, yeah. So in the presence of a quorum, I'm gonna have to, to, uh, give my support to Commissioner Fishers or Councilmember Fisher's, uh, names. Other than that, I've got nothing. Glad to see you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Fisher was one of them. Snow is not.
Snow is not.
Okay, there, that's my favorite. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont?
I also entered the contest.
Okay.
My names are Yeti, Olaf, and Snowball. So take that, Councilmember Fisher. You notice mine are very short, cause it's, those were the instructions. Keep it short. Um, yes, welcome back.
Thank you.
You look very rested and, uh, happy. A couple of things I wanted to follow up on, um, the councilmember Scarborough had inquired last week about the buckhouses, and I put another, uh, plaintiff plea out on the Historic Monroe Facebook page, um, letting folks know that Hattie and Harriet were still available, and I'm very happy to report that we've had some nibbles, um, some very viable nibbles. I'm actually meeting tomorrow night with, uh, Jeff McCord from Nickel Brothers and, um, a gentleman named Eric Kavanaugh, who's got that property at Fremont and Ferry, and I believe, um, Director Bailey is going to be meeting with us as well and talking about just some possibilities, which would be wonderful. So thank you for inquiring, and the power of Facebook is really something. So hopefully we'll be able to save them. Um, just a shout out for a couple of upcoming events that I'm planning to attend, and I hope some of you will consider joining me. Uh, the Jamie Bindle run is the twenty-eighth, I believe, um, two Sundays from now. Great event. Um, if you're not a runner, who cares? Come walk it, bring your dogs, uh, benefits behind the Badge Foundation, and our local law enforcement, I know, would be very pleased to see you there. So I hope you might consider that. Um, starts at ten o'clock, and if you haven't registered, they will pre-register you at nine. Doesn't matter, just come on down. Um, also on Saturday night, there is a bingo game benefiting the Senior Center, and that's always a lot of fun, too. So get out and support our local organizations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Foulter.
Okay, so I've got the comic and then the radio announcer. So I don't really know what to do with you people. I did think that Councilmember Fisher's co, uh, names were funnier, but your challenge was hilarious. So good job.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
Yes, nothing to report. He had Davis chair.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, all right. Now we have, uh, city administrator report for the extended agenda administrator night.
Thank you, Mayor. It's scrolling back up to the top. Uh, for Tuesday, January twenty-third, for the P three committee meeting, we have a couple of items on that agenda, approval of meeting minutes from November, election of chair, the twenty twenty-four community, oh, excuse me, committee work plan, presentation of traffic calming policy, and the shoreline master program amendments. For the regular business meeting on that same night, we have our exit conference with the state auditors, a public hearing for the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty transportation improvement plan with Mr. Peterson. We have on the consent agenda, the regular items, accounts payable, accounts for, accounts payable, meeting minutes, payroll, an inter-local agency agreement with the Snohomish Conservation District, uh, Naloxon, I L A, with Snohomish County, accepting the project and begin the lean period for Monroe wayfinding signs, accepting the project and beginning the lead period for Powell Street reconstruction, authorizing the mayor to sign the local agency consultant supplemental agreement number three, uh, for consulting for the Kelsey Street Railroad Crossing Improvement Program, and then a grant application for a Poverty one O one workshop, uh, that Rachel Adams is going to be organizing. Then we have the regular department reports, finance, H R I T, community development, police, public works, human services, and economic development. So those are the items scheduled for the January twenty-third meeting. Looking forward then to January thirtieth, just a reminder that we have a, uh, workshop on that night, and that will include um, presentations from our attorneys at Well. So.
You can go ahead and then I'll call him.
For O P M A and P R A, so Open Public Meetings Act and Public Records Act, conflict of interest and appearance of fairness, and then a review of the city's current strategic plan, kind of in preparation for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget and the five-year strategic plan. So those are items coming up for the remainder of January.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just was wondering if we could, uh, I think it was early December, um, I had asked if we could get, uh, an update on the extended agenda from the P D Development Agreement of Airport Property. Uh, and so I was just wondering with what we just have laid out, plus Olympia coming up. What we just have laid out plus Olympia coming up. Uh, if that's something that's on the books for late February then.
That actually is included, is going to be included in the department report coming from community development on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
We'll present information during that report.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about the extended agenda? Anybody know that they're not going to be present uh at a future date in the extended agenda? And as I'm saying that, I'm uh just going to announce for the record uh that we heard last week, the Councilmember Gamble would not be here this evening. So unless there's objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. Saying no objection. Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, no objection to this. I I will be absent uh. Tuesday, the thirteenth of February for that meeting, just. For your awareness.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. All right, any other questions or comments on the extended agenda? All right, Administrator Night, uh Administrator Report.
All right, uh, just one update for the Association of Washington City's City Action Days. So we do um have information for the six council members that will be attending. Um, action days, I think everybody is attending except for Mayor Thomas and Councilmember Gamble this year. Uh, so if there are three council members who would like to stay after the meeting tonight, we can go over those agenda materials and kind of the logistics. And then at the next meeting, we'll have the other three members stay and that way we avoid a quorum. Uh, we're just providing an update on what are we gonna do about travel arrangements and um what the expectations are for dinner and such. So. If you're willing to stay tonight, that's great. We can get three of you to stay this week and then three of you to stay next week. Okay.
One more volunteer to stay? All right, we got Scarborough, Beaumont and Walker staying tonight. All right, thank you.
All right, um, and then just a real quick update, it's not included on this slide, but I did want to just remind council that the legislative session has started. And it is, um, they are off and running and uh we're tracking a number of bills and so I'll provide an update next week just on. Some of the key bills that we're currently keeping an eye out for. Um, there, I won't name the bill numbers because it'll, it I think just kind of. Get in the way of the overall conversation, but the things that we're currently tracking right now are a bill um for RV disposal grants. Although that bill is right now specific to counties, um, and so we're asking questions about whether or not we can expand um that to cities. Sometimes RVs get abandoned in communities and there's just no good way to be able to haul those RVs that have been abandoned away and dispose of them. So that's a uh bill that we're tracking. Biosolids transport, we currently transport our own biosolids. So we're just keeping an eye on potential new regulations and requirements for bio-biosolids transport. Um, prejudgment interest, that's a bill that um was presented during last year's legislative session. It didn't make it, but remember, because we're in the two-year cycle, bills that didn't pass out of um. Either one of the two houses last year could be reintroduced this year, and so that one is being reintroduced. Um, there's a couple of bills um that are um intended to fund criminal justice or attract and retain law enforcement officers. So we're obviously closely monitoring those. Um, and then a bill that would look to expand. What's called residential targeted areas, which would allow more intense development to occur. Um, in counties within an urban growth area but outside of a city. So we're also keeping an eye on that one. So more to come as the legislative session continues to unfold. We're starting our first um Friday updates uh starting this coming week. So uh again, we'll have more information for council next week and for the remainder of the session. That's it for me. Thank you.
Any questions about the Administrator's report? All right, uh, we're gonna go into the mayor's report. Um, you'll see in your packets Monroe this week, volume ten, addition two. Um, I was on vacation last week and a half. I do appreciate all the work that the staff has been doing to keep things moving and I appreciate, uh, was it? Uh, Councilmember Hanford, were you? Mayor Proten, so thanks for uh facilitating the meeting last week. I really appreciate it. Uh, I don't have anything else to report myself tonight, right now. Anybody have any questions or comments for me? All right, um, so before we go into adjournment. I do note that we do not have a uh in executive session per se tonight. We do have what's called a closed session. Uh, this is a little bit different than an executive session. An executive session happens within a council meeting. A closed session is a separate meeting that is not part of a council meeting. And so uh in a moment, we will be adjourning. Uh, when we adjourn, we will go into a closed session. Uh, this will be for collective bargaining person to RCW four uh RCW forty-two point thirty point one forty subsection four subsection little B. Um, we will not be unlike in a, different than an executive session, we will not be announcing extensions or anything like that. In the closed session and we're not required to identify um when we think we're coming out of session. So just as a reminder for folks, this is a little bit different. Uh, than an executive session. Clerk Wyckoff or Administrator Knight, do you have anything else you'd like me to add about the closed session before we adjourn? Okay, sounds good. And uh so there being no objection, we will be in adjournment. All right, council, we are adjourned. Thank you.